Janelle, you were coming in very clear and loud just a moment ago, whatever you did.
Well, I'm letting you not say anything or else it's echoing. Okay, Mark, you should be able to be heard now in the system.
Well, it sounds like you're yelling at me from down the hallway.
Well, it shouldn't sound that way when everybody else is speaking, but now we've kind of added a microphone to a laptop to ensure that everybody here in the chambers can hear you as you can freely speak during this next work session. It's only when Janelle talks that it sounds crazy echoey, I think.
It should be better. What about me?
I have to have my speakers on for the story.
Let's try me because that's who people want to hear most, I'm thinking.
That's a good point.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great.
Well, then moving ahead and call our work session to order. And roll call, all council members of the Council of Congress. And we have a guest speaker in, I'll let Kevin introduce. Yes, President. Online, Councilor Roberts, online. So tonight, we have a work session. So one of the things we've had some discussion on is, is there interest potentially for an urban renewal area within the city? And if so, what type of and how large of urban renewal? We have a lot of vacant properties right now. There's advantages and disadvantages to an urban renewal. Number of things that we could do, you can have it for on some of our industrial properties. We can limit it to some of our properties that we have that are for commercial to increase development of what we look at for downtown. But there's a number of things that come into play with urban renewal that before we even look at that, thought it'd be good to ask Elaine to come in and kind of talk about the concepts. Because is it timely now for us to do that or would it ever be? You know, let her kind of share that. But that's kind of what tonight is to look at is to kind of just not make any decisions right there. Kind of so that we all have a clear understanding of what it means if we were to consider urban renewal and those impacts that have both short term and long term benefits, pros and cons. With that, thank you.
That sounds perfect. I'm Elaine Howard, I'm a consultant who owns my own consulting firm and I've been doing urban renewal consulting since 2005. That's all my firm does, so we concentrate on it and know it really from A to Z. We work all over the state and I like to say from Astoria to Pendleton and down to Clamfall and Brookings and kind of everywhere in between. So we do big ones with the city of Portland. We've done really tiny ones like with the city of Turner, so a similar sized city to Newhersburg. And really know and understand the statute and how it works and how urban renewal affects communities. So this is just an information presentation tonight and I've given it plenty of time, so I don't have any problem if you want to stop and interrupt me at any point in the presentation. A lot of times I may hit something and I may say, oh, that's coming in a slide as we're moving forward. But if you need something to explain more fully or don't understand something, feel free to interrupt. So what we'll cover is what is urban renewal or tax increment financing? And why do communities decide to use urban renewal? And then what we call a crash course, Urban Renewal TIF 101, which is basically how it works, how it functions. And then to give you some project examples of other projects that have been undertaken across the state. So urban renewal is not a new tax. That is probably the biggest confusion that people have is how can you get new money if you're not increasing our taxes to get that new money? But it is not a new tax, it is a division of taxes that are already being paid. And we'll go through that on a couple more of the slides to detail exactly how that works. So the impact of urban renewal is on taxing districts, not on a property taxpayer. So urban renewal diverts funds from overlapping taxing districts, including the city itself, from the time an urban renewal area is formed until that urban renewal area closes in the future. Those property taxing districts continue receiving property taxes on what's called a frozen basis assessed value. That's a value of the properties within the urban renewal area at the time it's formed. And they continue getting their taxes on that, so they never get a decrease in taxes. What they don't get is an increase in the taxes over the lifetime of the urban renewal area. So they temporarily, temporarily is many times from 25 to 30 years, forego that growth on property taxes within that area. And that amount of money is then given to the Urban Renewal Agency to do projects and programs and to administer an urban renewal plan for the area. Many times that growth would not have occurred, but for those projects that happen in an urban renewal area and in many cities that have a lot of underdeveloped property or undeveloped property, that's especially true because that property value is very low. The amount of taxes you're getting off of that property value is next to nothing. And what you might get is a 3% increase in that every year, but it's an increase on basically nothing. So what is urban renewal? It's used in all 50 states in the United States. The state of Washington just approved it two years ago. They were late to come to use urban renewal, but now all 50 states have it. It's used as an economic development tool. It is unique in that it has a financing source attached to it. So you do planning, you develop a plan, but you also develop a way to get money to actually implement projects that are associated with that plan. By statute, it's used to address what are called blighting influences within your area. And blight is specifically defined in the statute that covers urban renewal. It functions on increases in those property tax revenues once an urban renewal area is formed and it's used all over Oregon. The next slide is a little bit outdated, but it pretty well shows you that up and down the I-5 corridor, there are many urban renewal areas in the larger cities. Some of the smaller cities have started getting urban renewal up and down the I-5. Along the coast, most of them are using urban renewal. And in central Oregon, most of the cities also have an urban renewal area. The reason cities decide to use urban renewal is that they have projects that need to be done. A lot of kinds of infrastructure projects, streets that need to be built, sidewalks that need to be built, sewer, stormwater, water lines, but they don't have the funding to do that. So they are looking at for an additional funding source to help them either complete infrastructure projects or to complete a downtown planned vision or to help bring new jobs to the community by investing in industrial development. So generally, those general funds aren't sufficient enough to do all of those kinds of projects. And so cities are looking for other sources of funding to add to those general funds. So how does urban renewal work? Next slide. So when we all pay our property taxes in November of every year, the county assessor sends those property tax revenues to the regular taxing jurisdictions. Our property taxes in Oregon go up for two reasons. They go up by a limited 3% appreciation a year. That is the maximum announced that our assessed value may increase. So sometimes that's confusing because your real market value many times will increase more than that, but you're not taxed on your real market value, you're taxed on your assessed value. And that assessed value may not increase by more than 3% per year. The other way our property taxes go up is if there is a substantial improvement or new construction. Those are the only reasons in Oregon that our property taxes go up. If we sell our property and there's a new sales price, that doesn't impact that assessed value. It's still frozen at that 3% increase. When an urban renewal area is formed within a city, that, those properties in that particular area are treated differently by the county assessor. At the time the urban renewal area is formed, the assessor compiles all of the total assessed values of properties within that area and establishes what's called a frozen basis assessed value. Excuse me. Again, all the taxing jurisdictions continue, next slide please, to get their, ooh. Go back, there should be another one here. It's not showing.
Sorry, the PDF seems to skip over.
Sorry. Go back to that one, I'll explain what it should have. Sometimes the PDFs do that and I don't know why. What there should be is a blue bar above that and the city manager can send that out to you tomorrow that shows property tax revenue now being diverted to the Urban Renewal Agency for those increases in property tax values. And again, that is just for that area that's in the urban renewal area, it's not for the city as a whole. But it is for all of those properties within the urban renewal area. So the impact of that, there is an impact on your own city budget. There's an impact on the other taxing districts budgets also. So again, blight is a precondition of an urban renewal area. And blight typically is under utilization or underdevelopment of property. So if you have a lot of vacant property, that should be or could be paying taxes to help support services and they are not, that is considered by the statutory definition as a reason that you may establish an urban renewal area. Poor condition of buildings is another reason, but you don't have an established old downtown that you have to renovate, so that's not really what would be one of your conditions of blight. And then inadequacy of infrastructure, including streets and utilities. So those are the typical blight findings that are made. An urban renewal area functions on an income source. That's that collection of those property tax revenues on the increases on assessed value. It has expenses for projects, programs and administration, has to develop a budget every year, just like the city budget. It's a separate process because the Urban Renewal Agency is a separate division from the city. It's not part of the city, it is a separate organization. It is usually the city council itself, so they appoint themselves as the board members of the agency. But the agency has its own rules and requirements and its own budget. And then there's a spending limit in urban renewal that's called a maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness is set at the time that an urban renewal plan is adopted. And it is the total amount of funds that can be spent over that 25 to 30 year timeframe on projects, programs and administration. So people ask, well, what controls when an urban renewal area ends? And urban renewal ends when it reaches its maximum indebtedness, when it has spent the amount of money. The way we figure out a maximum indebtedness is we look at what that frozen base will be, calculate what we think that 3% growth would be. We work with the city to find out what other growth they think might be happening within the city. If there's other development that is planned, that will bring in new assessed value. And we make a projection of what that particular boundary for the urban renewal area could bring in over that 25 to 30 year timeframe. That amount of money is what's shown in blue here, that's called the increment. And from that, we calculate what your maximum indebtedness could be because it is the amount of money that could come in over the lifetime of an urban renewal area because of that increase in taxes. So if you decided to go ahead, we would do financial analysis and come back and talk to you and say over a 20, 25, 30 year timeframe, this is the amount of money we think that you could raise using urban renewal. Is that something you're interested in or not? I have given this presentation at the Oregon League of Cities and had city councilors come up to me afterwards and say, well, why couldn't we just do this and use our own city tax rate? Just put the city money in. Why do we have to set up an urban renewal area? What urban renewal does is gives you the entire permanent rate tax levy amount. And usually, the city's portion of that is somewhere below 40% of the entire tax rate. So yes, you could say, we're going to allocate a certain amount of money to this area in the future and make a city budgetary decision to do that. But if you establish that area as an urban renewal area, instead of getting 40 cents on the dollar because you have 40% of the tax rate, you're getting the full dollar of property tax revenue that comes in. So it's a way to leverage your own city investment by those other property tax revenues that would otherwise be going to the other taxing districts. So again, a summary of how urban renewal works, there's no new taxes to the property tax owner. Schools are indirectly impacted by urban renewal and I have a couple of other slides on that further in the program. This is a little tricky because even though an urban renewal area does not increase your property taxes, when the assessor sends out a property tax bill to any city property tax, property owners that has urban renewal, so let's say city of Albany, every citizen has that on the property tax bill and it's a separate line item that says urban renewal. So the first thing people do when they see that is say, ah, they told us urban renewal wouldn't increase our property taxes, but there it is, right there on our property tax bill, it says urban renewal and it says this amount of money is going to be renewed. We work with cities when they adopt an urban renewal plan to help them have information that they can send out to their property taxpayers that helps explain why it's on your property tax bill and helps to show them that it's not really an increase in their taxes, but it's a division of that taxes. It is still confusing, but I think our firm does a really good job of helping cities prepare that information. We also work with assessor's offices and sometimes they'll send out information in, especially if a city has a new urban renewal area. So when they send out those tax bills, they'll send out an information sheet that explains what is urban renewal and what does it mean and why isn't it raising your property taxes? So it is something that's difficult to understand. We think do a pretty good job of helping cities explain that if they go ahead. It's important to note that urban renewal affects only permanent rate property taxes. Bonds and local option levies are not part of an urban renewal program. So if your local fire district or your school district has a bond, urban renewal does not impact any of the collections of that.
Elaine, you mentioned that schools are indirectly impacted and maybe it's coming up on the one.
It'll be, I think, three slides more.
Okay.
Till we get to that. This just shows you a little bit about how we help people understand why urban renewal is on your property tax bill and that it doesn't really increase your property taxes. And we use a property value of $100,000, which is that first row here. And if we look at that, and this is just a sample city where the property tax rate was 13.1048, and on a property value at $100,000, that property tax bill would be $1,310.48. We use 100,000 because it's easy to multiply by two or three so people can get an idea of what this really means. Next slide. If there's no urban renewal in your city, you can, and we are in a recession, you can pretty much assume that that property tax bill will go up by 3% because the assessor always increases that if they can. So this property tax bill will go up by 3%. The assessed value will move from 100,000 to 103,000 and that actual payment goes up by 3%. Next slide. So if that property went into an urban renewal area and the assessor was calculating how much money would go to the urban renewal area from this property and the property went in when it was valued at 100,000, it increased to 103,000. That 3% is that difference for urban renewal. The assessor will do that for every property within the urban renewal area to get the total amount. And let's say the first year, your total amount is $15,000 that would go to the urban renewal area. The assessor then takes that $15,000 and splits it on every tax bill in the city and does that by reducing the amount that the other taxing districts get where the bottom line would be the same, but the taxing districts get a little less and urban renewal will have a line item and they will get that difference to make up that money that has to go to the urban renewal area. That, of course, can be no more complicated than that. And that happened because of Measures 5 and 47 and 50 when they were passed and Schreil sued the city of Portland and says, we think that you have to calculate this differently because of Measures 47 and 50 and the courts agreed with them. And this is the way that the assessors and the Department of Renew figured out that it had to be shown. So it is totally confusing to everybody, but that is, that is what happens if you have urban renewal in your community. So urban renewals in local school districts. Our schools are funded by the state school fund on a per people basis and the legislature established what that per people amount is every time that they need. Permanent rate property taxes are part of that state school fund. Urban renewal in any community affects the amount of money that goes into that state school fund from the permanent rate property taxes. But the legislature has other funds that they are able to tap to backfill essentially the amount of money that doesn't go to those funds from permanent rate property taxes. So they increase those allocations from their other funding sources. They do not reduce the per pupil amount because urban renewal is in your community or urban renewal is in Portland or urban renewal is in Wardman. The state school fund stays full. That is the same for the education service districts and it's the same for the community colleges except they have their own fund, a community college fund. And theirs is funded on a number of classes that students take. Next slide. So this just shows you for regular taxing districts, the impact of urban renewal is direct to the taxing district. So they will get less money than if an urban renewal area didn't exist. Next slide. And this shows you the complexity of our Oregon school fund. And it shows that property tax revenues are part of that overall source and that there are many other formulas and funding sources that go into the state school fund. And it does not reduce the amount of money that goes to local schools. There are statutory limitations on how much urban renewal any city may have. So a city that has a population of under 50,000 may have up to 25% of their assessed value in an urban renewal area and up to 25% of their acreage. Once you establish a plan, that actual acreage may not be increased by more than 20% of the original acreage of the planned area. And that maximum indebtedness number, which is your spending limit, may not be increased by more than 20% except if other taxing districts representing 75% of the levy agree that that's an okay thing to do. So that was something the special districts asked be put in the statute so that urban renewal areas didn't keep going on and on and on because they just kept increasing their maximum indebtedness. An urban renewal plan is required to have public input. That public input can be as little as these public meetings that I'm going to go through here or it can be more involved like an open house or an advisory committee or a task force. And that really depends on the individual communities and smaller communities like yours. A lot of times it's hard to get people to volunteer to work on advisory committees or task forces. So a lot of times, urban renewal plans are put together by staff and city council. Yours may be different, you may have a lot of volunteers you can tap to do things, but in many small communities, that's what we find. You have to have an urban renewal agency. So if you decided you wanted to go ahead, you have to write an ordinance establishing an urban renewal agency. It's a non-emergency ordinance, which means it has to have two readings and does not go into effect until 30 days after passage of the ordinance. The agency is the body that starts an urban renewal plan. So they actually review a draft urban renewal plan and then they make the decision whether or not to send it out for formal public review. Formal public review includes sending it to all of the impacted taxing districts and saying, city of Newhersburg is thinking of establishing an urban renewal area. Here's our plan, here's our report, here's the projected impacts on your taxing district. Here are the projects that we envisioned doing and here's why we think this is a good thing for all of us. They have 45 days to review that and send written comments back to the city. They can't stop you from forming an urban renewal area. They don't have a vote now, the city council has the final determination. But if they have concerns and they send you those concerns in writing, the city council is required to address those concerns in the adoption ordinance. The planning commission has to review a potential plan for conformance with your urban renewal, with your comprehensive plan. We help the planning commission understand that role. We write those findings for them because we understand how those two work together. And I've never had that not be found because clearly whatever you're trying to do, it's usually in conformance with your comprehensive plan. So we just have to write those findings for the planning commission to review and adopt. And then the city council has to review an urban renewal plan. They have to have a hearing that is advertised citywide. So either through voters, utility customers or residents or property owners, one of those four lists. They have to have a non-emergency ordinance again for the urban renewal area, which is two readings and 30 days before it goes into effect. So there, like I said earlier, there are a couple of approaches to new urban renewal plans. Some cities have advisory committees. Those are typically made up of the main overlapping taxing districts, residents, business owners, a chamber of commerce, planning commission member, U.S.A. city councilor or mayor. Or it can be guided by staff and city council. And that really depends on what the city council decides how they want to approach it. So let's stop there just for a minute before we get into the more fun part, which is looking at the projects and see if there are questions just about the technical aspects. And I did have some, your city attorney provided me some questions and I could go through those questions too because they're more technical. Do you want me to go through those questions first maybe because?
I mean, to the extent, I would say use your discretion because you did cover some of that information in your presentation today, so.
Amendment process. An amendment for just changing projects within a plan is really easy. It can be done by the Urban Renewal Agency by adoption of a resolution at any meeting. There are two things that are hard amendments and one is increasing the boundary over 1% of the original boundary or increasing that maximum indebtedness. And that maximum indebtedness one is because you have to get the other taxing districts to agree. The 1% one is just a limitation that taxing districts did not want to see urban renewal areas just kind of move all over the city. And so they are trying to make sure that you have to go through the same process of adopting a new urban renewal plan if you're adding property to your urban renewal area over 1%. And then what is a termination process like? Any city that has an urban renewal area, as long as they have no debt, can terminate that urban renewal area. So if you started an urban renewal. My probably best and worst project was in Lake Oswego a number of years ago where we had a city council that adopted an urban renewal plan in November. There was an election and in January it was repealed. It was probably one of the best urban renewal plans I've ever written. Would have been most effective in terms of what it would have done for that city. And I do a lot of work for Lake Oswego. But that was the shortest lived urban renewal plan I've ever worked on. There are others where they've finished the main projects and they've paid off their debt and they don't see a need to keep going and so they terminate their agency area early because they've been able to be successful and terminate. I'm sorry, I've gotten over COVID, but I'm still having some remaining issues, so I apologize for that. The other question I had, and this is a really interesting and great question, which is, okay, you started an urban renewal area and you start taking all this money and what happens if we have a recession or we have COVID and we need some of that money back for our city budget? Or our taxing district partners need some of that money? Are you stuck with taking all of that money? No. Every year, you are allowed to do something called an under levy. And under levy means you can make a decision to not take the full amount of property tax revenues that are due to you. If you have an urban renewal area by July first of every year, you have to fill out a form to give to the county assessor that says how much of that revenue you're going to take. And so you can say you're going to take less of that revenue and you can make that decision on an annual basis. The statute does require that you consult and confer with the other taxing districts before you ever do an under levy because it might impact them. So you have to think about that and let them know this is something worth thinking about and doing. And you also have to make sure it doesn't, of course, affect any long-term debt that you may have. So if you've taken out a loan that you have to repay, you, of course, need to take in enough money to repay that loan. Or if you have any contractual obligations that you need to make, you, of course, need to bring in enough money. But you, I have had during COVID, I had three or four agencies that under levy during that time period to allow more money to go to the city to work with their local businesses. And I do have some cities that under levy every year. And it really depends on what projects they have coming forward. So they, they decide if they don't have a project, a big project that year and they don't need to save that money, that they'll go ahead and under levy. So it is used differently across the state, but it is an option for you if, if you decide you need to do that. And let's then just see if there are other questions.
Like you, you mentioned a couple of times just the relationship to borrowing in debt service. But maybe you can speak to that a little bit more about why is that a common fact pattern? How are they using this kind of dedicated, dedicated funding source to leverage and actually do the construction projects that we're going to look at?
Okay, so a couple of things about urban renewal that are different from a city budget. In urban renewal, you are required by the statute to spend money through a debt instrument. So you have to incur debt. So different cities do that differently. Some of them do what are called du jour bonds. So they know they're going to get, let's say it's thirty thousand dollars from the assessor this year. They work with a local credit union. They do overnight borrow. So they borrow the money. They get the money from the assessor's office. They pay the money back. And they've turned it into debt. There are two reasons why that's important. One, the statute requires that you do it. Number two, it's an easy way to track your maximum indebtedness because once you've turned it into debt, you then subtract that from that big number of maximum indebtedness. It's the amount of money that you can pay. Other cities, I just talked with City Roseburg yesterday. We did a new urban renewal area for them about three or four years ago. And they're getting ready to incur long-term debt. And that's because they have a bigger project that they want to do that's more money than they can pay for just out of their annual revenues. So they're going to incur a loan that they'll be able to pay debt service on that will allow them to have more revenues upfront to be able to do, this is construction of a road. So to do the construction of the road now, instead of putting away that money every year for twenty years. And in twenty years, you get to build the road. If you incur the debt and you pay off that debt through the tax increment proceeds, you can do projects earlier, you do have the expense of the debt that you have to pay, the interest expense. But it allows you to do those projects earlier. Does that address? Any other questions? A lot of times you won't really have questions until the next day. And you'll say, what did she say about this or that? And so feel free to follow up with questions with your staff and they can feel free to follow up with me. Because that, it's a lot of information to hear at one point and it's pretty technical. And our statutes are pretty poorly written. So a lot of it doesn't make a lot of sense. Is that intuitive?
The way you explain it makes so much sense. So are there any other questions?
Yeah, like one of the things, once an area is set, you cannot, the value increase in that area, you have to unless you're undervaluing. So, so that comes, comes into play. So, you know, one of the challenges I think that we would have if we were to look at this, let's say that we, we have an area that we identify and let's say we have a business company that's a billion dollar investment. You're, you're now increasing by that, by that billion. It's probably well above anything that we would ever need. But that's now not available for other things. You know, I think just something we need to keep in mind. So one of the things we've talked with is we see industry come in. You know, we've talked about increasing our emergency services, you know. So those funds, you know, once they're committed to, once we go into an urban renewal, those aren't going to be available for a period of time. Now, you know, depending on if we have something like that, you're probably going to pay that urban renewal off pretty quick, depending on what you decide to do.
Right.
But that's something I think that you need to look at if we were to go that route. You know, we may want to, you know, have it down compared to what probably some of our cities are. So we're in a unique situation as a city.
So the, the other thing to consider is on an under levy, the city of Wilsonville did this. They did it at the request of the school district, but they did a permanent under levy. So you could do that. If you, if you establish an urban renewal area, a new development, industrial development came in, brought in a lot of money, more money than you really needed. But there wasn't any way to say, well, we'll take half that building. You could permanently under levy and say, we're going to take half of that new value and we're going to put the rest of that back on the tax rules. And so i- if more money came in than you needed or wanted, that's a way you could address that.
How does enterprise zones impact?
Enterprise zones don't play well with urban renewal because in an enterprise zone, they don't have to pay property taxes. So urban renewal can't. So if you do an enterprise zone, you're basically taking, you know, five, eight, ten, whatever years it is, of property taxes away from your urban renewal area. So really you would do one or the other, most likely.
But I mean, if you did one, if you did the URA and then you did the enterprise zone, I mean, it goes in part to the, to the timing of the expected bump up in, in the taxing and financing. Because if, if you wait until five years after the, the new investment, private investment in the community has occurred and then you do it then, well, there's no incremental increase other than potential appreciation, things like that. So.
Right.
Yeah, you do, there's.
What, what we would run into a problem with in that case though potentially is we do a clawback agreement with them for when they're coming in on, for public safety. So we would be clawing back during that five years, two sixty-one. So what I think you're saying is you go ahead and do that. At the end of that five years, that two sixty-one now is no longer coming back in the public safety. That two sixty-one and all the rest of it now is going into urban renewal. So what we had planned on, what we had for coming in for funds to do, we would lose. So that's something we'd have to keep in, that's just something we need to keep in mind from what I'm, from what I'm hearing. Based on what, you know, we're doing now, based on previous counsel.
So we, we have done urban renewal areas that intersected enterprise zones. And as long as you're upfront with everybody and do that and you know this happened in the city of Scupus. We all knew and we, with the other taxing districts, that this enterprise zone is going to expire. And the renewal area is going to get the full benefit of that because the enterprise zone at, at that point changes that valuation. So that's something, if we moved ahead, that was something we, we would need to work closely with the assessor and just make sure everybody knew what was happening. There's another example that I'm working with in a different locality where the county is very upset because the city is taking the money at, at the point that the enterprise zone is ending because they feel like everybody ought to be able to get that money at this point because the property taxpayer already got that benefit and that everybody ought to be able to enjoy that. So there are politics just to be aware of on, on the enterprise zone issue.
So a couple of things I'll just share. So we just, our new assess values just came out. So some of you may be seeing your new tax bills coming up shortly too. But so our assess value, we actually, I think we were estimating at three point five percent. And I think we came in at eight point three percent increase. So we're at seven hundred and thirty million now. So when we talked about, you know, the twenty-five percent, so that'd be a hundred and eighty-two, five, hundred and eighty-two million, five hundred, which I don't think we would ever get close to.
So you must have had a lot of new development or a big new development that just hit. Because eight point five is a big increase.
Well, we have, we had some stuff that probably has come off enterprise zone, I'm thinking. But also our local utilities just made a major investment in, in a new power substation and some significant increasing in their electrical distribution centers to support the industry here. So I think that.
Right.
We weren't counting, we didn't calculate that because I didn't want to. So we were, we wanted to be.
Yeah.
We've seen our housing lower. So, so on that. So, and if you were to look at, so our rate right now is fifteen sixty-one, twenty-one. So we have one of the lower rates in the, in the county. Our city tax rate's only three fifty. But if you were to take out the bonds and the levies, what we would be looking at is ten dollars and twenty, ten twenty-four roughly. Of, so of the fifteen, we wouldn't be, there's about four dollars we wouldn't be collecting. Be about ten dollars and twenty-four cents.
So it's still, you're about a third of the permanent rate levy.
Yeah.
So your, your thirty-three cents is giving you a dollar. You're leveraging your thirty-three cents to get the dollar.
And we don't have this coming. I'm not sure how it affects, so there's no need to ask. But I'm, I'm sure there's impacts on cities where they're under compression.
Yes.
Because the rates are showing.
I mean, the city of Swego keeps calling us and saying, can we do it now? Can we do it now? But they have serious compression issues. And if you have serious compression issues, urban renewal does not work.
Which we don't have. That's one of the things that, you know, we're fortunate we don't have.
So I'll just go through some of the projects and I'll, I'll go through these pretty quickly. But projects that are typically done around the state are infrastructure projects, streets utilities, streets catalyzing development. So working with developers, storefront loans, parks and plazas. So infrastructure is probably one you'd be most interested in. Streets, utilities. And urban renewal is a great tool to use for that. Storefront loans. That's probably not a big thing for what you need here, but it can be set up to help improve your businesses. Next. This is in Estacada, a really nice streetscape project that they did on a, a really fairly modest budget, but turned out really great. This is more, you know, they did things by, by changing the texture and changing the colors. So it still looks great, but wasn't nearly as expensive as some other places. Downtown signage is, is really effective. Refining signage, signage for businesses, signage for the city. So you can see some of your other cities in Oregon. And Sisters, there's dorm room retention and streetscape was partially funded through urban renewals, also through the state highway project. So parks, gathering places, those lovely two children are my grandchildren. They're playing in a park in Wilsonville. This is Millennium Park in Lake Oswego. Tillamook Festival Street, so they took a, a block in their downtown. They also do a lot of building renovations, but they took a block in their downtown that they shut off for dance programs and other events, concerts, commerce market. This is Astoria Fort George Brewery and Pub. So the top is, it was an old automobile warehouse. You can see all the broken windows. That's what it looked like when I first started working with them. It's now Fort George Brewery, which is a really very great business that the city of Astoria now has. And totally improved that. And then the Bandit Face Rock Creamery might be one that, folks from here might get down to Bandit. But that was a project where the urban renewal area worked with the property owner. And urban renewal did the parking lot and the public restroom. The property owner takes over and maintains the public restroom. So the city doesn't have to do maintenance on it. But brought in jobs and it's a really nice little tourist attraction right there at the opening of. So those are different kinds of projects from around the state?
So a, a question. So we own property across the street and we don't have a downtown area now. So one of the things that was, you know, we've talked about, you know, that might be an area to look at in urban renewal because then if we could get some private investors to come in knowing that we have that set up for that. So if we're to do that, that's, those are funds, by understanding, that can be used to help build and, and not just for the infrastructure, but actual.
Yes.
The structures and stuff as well that we would want to look at.
You, you can also use urban renewal to help fund a downtown plan. So you're working with, we, we don't do that. You know, you would work with a planning consultant to help do a vision of what, you know, a downtown plan would look like, a downtown area would look like. I'm sure you've all pulled over that and that. But yes, you can participate with owners and developers to, in construction of buildings. I, I don't really like urban renewal agencies to actually own the buildings.
Right.
But if you can buy the property or you own the property, resell the property for a specific use, that's a great thing about owning the property is you have, you then can have control over what that ultimate use is and make sure that it is a use and it looks like what you want it to look like. You, you have the ability to form your own downtown. So you want to make sure it looks like what you'd like it to look like. So that's, I'm working with the city of Wilsonville right now. You know, they, they're a great city. They have done lots of great things. They don't really have a downtown. They, you know, Lake Oswego has this great little downtown. Wilsonville doesn't. They have this great plan, but where the old price was, and I'm sure some of you might know where that is. That's all for sale, but it's for sale on the open market. And anybody can buy that and do anything they want with it. There's relying, so planning things on it. But unless the city can actually buy that or the urban renewal agency can buy it, they don't really have control over what happens there. Whereas if you own the land, that's a huge way to make your city develop the way you want it to. It's a real benefit.
So if we were to go that route, we'd, like I said, if you, if you likely are industrial property.
Well, is that a thought or? Well, that's, I think that's the question. My, I guess my concern with our industrial property is you're tying a couple of things. All of our industrial property is going to have urban renewal.
Right.
I mean, enterprise zone.
Enterprise.
And we, and if we're doing, you know, if we look at what we have said to the community, one of the things we have touted to the community is that as that develops, you know, we're able to do more in parks, public safety and things. So you might be able to do parks, you can be able to do capital, but we already built our fire station, so we don't need to build capital for, for that. So you're going to have some delay in some of those other service areas though. Potentially some delays in, with that, especially if you're using a large chunk because we know that we're going to need some additional, as we see the new parks come in, we're going to need additional staffing. So it's going to be a balance of that. So you don't, you know, it would want to, I think, if it was something you would need to look at, maybe condensing. But, you know, we're talking, you know, some of our properties are going to be some pretty, could be some high value industry coming in on them. So that's one of, that would be one of the concerns. I could see something that would make sense, you know, if we were to do something initially is potentially our commercial property. Because if we did have something coming in on that, anything to keep in on, on that, especially if we were to go, you know, potentially up, that could be an option. Or if we do something that maybe we, we limit. You know, there's some industrial right now that potentially could be developing and it's a smaller scale where they may not be in an enterprise zone initially. So that might be one to consider. You know, it's not going to be as large a scale as what.
I think there's some continuity for limitations. So got to think about land. And purpose is to go ahead and raise revenue first to plan for the downtown and then to, you know, figure out how to offset the initial private investors infrastructure. Because, you know, apartment builder, somebody's not going to.
Right.
Be able to carry the full load on that. So see, you know, figuring out the cart before the horse is. So see, you know, figuring out the car before the horse is a classic example. But can you speak to, just like on a map? I mean, they do, can you use roads to, as a cherry stem connection?
Yeah.
So you have some like general regional flexibility, but it just maybe we can't do it on the other side of town.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was one of my questions, if we could do one here and let's say, I'll just use the Trump stop. Or maybe.
Trump stop might be.
Unless you're looking at being redeveloped.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess not. Yeah, maybe.
It might not be enough.
I was thinking.
But if you're, if you're thinking about like, you know, immediately here, but then you're the, on the, excuse me, the west side, near the railroad tracks, like you could potentially use Conser as a connective strip of, of, of the city and maybe.
On the railroad line.
So there's, there's, there's some ways to think, but think kind of regionally within the town.
The property actually, I was thinking it was north of Trump stop. It's a nonprofit.
But I don't believe, I guess you could answer this. So we have hospital owns property north, so there wouldn't be any value.
They don't pay taxes.
And that's why, after hearing it, I was like, that's not going to work.
Unless they have private office offices. But most often they don't, they don't pay taxes.
And, and I would say even on the commercial side, yeah, that'd be something I think we'd want to take a look at if we wanted to do it on the commercial side. Because talking with some developers or there may be options for things besides economic development, that other things that are out there now, programs in similar to urban renewal, but a little bit different that can also be used and talking some. So if that's something we wanted to look at, it might be worth having that discussion.
Kevin, to your point, like if you have a chunk of land and on the front end, you basically use your power as the owner of the property to sell at a discount in order to use that as the incentive to start the plan. And then that becomes the catalyst with the tax increment financing to then fund the rest of the incentive programs. And, and then the rest of the property can be sold at market rate in, in a way. So because we have so much that we own, as Delane said, you know, there's, there is more flexibility in how we think about, you know, encouraging economic development, commercial development or, or different uses in that area beyond just the, the TIF and the indebtedness from the.
Interesting, yeah. Did Mark have any questions? It's just.
Mark, if you have any questions, feel free to unmute yourself and speak the room, can hear you.
No, I'm good.
Sounds good.
Well.
You have some neighboring communities. Lebanon has to use urban renewal really well.
Not sure they've used it, but they've come in.
I think Albany's used it pretty well.
Where's Albany?
But there's a lot of.
Downtown, yeah.
Theirs is downtown.
Yeah.
There's stress between the county commission and the city of Albany and their urban renewal area.
Yeah.
And the county commission pretty much supports Lebanon's urban renewal. So I'm always confused about what's happening. But that, the whole medical school there in Lebanon was an earthquake. That was one of my first urban renewal plans that I wrote. And, and that has just been a great addition to the city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job using it.
Well, Elaine, thank you. Any, any follow-up questions before we conclude? Thank you for the presentation and information, it's a lot to sort of, I gotta go down, I gotta probably go read more about it.
We'll, we'll send you the PowerPoint as well.
Okay. Yeah, that is going to be a.
Thank you for being willing to drive down the seat. I just really, that helped a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, it was helpful. Yeah, with that, I'm going to adjourn us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we got the audit.
Yep.